We have, but not just people from the community.
Right.
Call this meeting to order. If you'll all please rise for the invocation by Pastor John and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me. Father God, we come before you, Lord, and we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance upon this board that you would give them the collective wisdom beyond their years to make the decisions that need to be made, Lord, that would glorify you. And we just ask for your blessing upon this community. And we just lift this up to you all in the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor John. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held July 19th, 2021 at 9:00 AM?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, is Supervisor Angus on the phone?
Supervisor Angus, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Legislative report, Supervisor Angus, do you have anything?
I have nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
I attended the workforce development gathering and also a township of chloride meeting. That's it.
Supervisor Gould?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
With the legislature, I've been in contact with Regina Cobb, and I imagine that we're going to get the Mojave County Water User Study Committee ramped up and going here pretty quick this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended a quad state meeting. I have submitted a report to the clerk to pass out to the board members on the evolving discussions on the Cohesi Wildlife or Wildfire Management Program. And we had then had to call a special meeting. Jerry Hillier, our Executive Director, passed away, and we've temporarily put in Bill Lamb as the Executive Director. That's all I have. County Manager?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. One brief item, an update on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. As of Friday, July 2nd, 261 applications have been approved, which equates to $1,017,000 in rental assistance and a little over $116,000 in utility assistance. The total disbursement is $1,134,000. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Call to the public, Chris Hurdarty.
Chris Hurdarty, Kingman. We have just returned from a long holiday weekend celebrating our Declaration of Independence. Many of us spent the Fourth of July with family and friends at the barbecue and watching fireworks light up the night sky. Now that the ashes of charcoal and sulfur have been swept away, it's a good time to reflect on what the lesser quoted portions of our founding document have to say. I'll include relevant selections in the interest of time, and as I read, listen for similarities of the reign of King George III with the reign of Harris Biden 2021. Quote, "He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation. He has imposed taxes on us without our consent. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny already begun with circumstances of cruelty and profanity scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy the head of a civilized nation. He has excited domestic insurrections amongst us. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by a repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be ruler of a free people," unquote. What I have just read may seem irrelevant in Mojave County, Arizona. Let me remind you, it all started in small villages and outposts in the New World and spread throughout the colonies, this desire to live as free men and women. Let us never forget our humble beginnings, especially in today's disturbing times. Let us always adhere to our beloved Constitution and Bill of Rights, sacrifices of blood and treasure freely passed along from a few divinely inspired American visionaries. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation to approve recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the county of Mojave. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now have a presentation of the Arizona Department of Transportation, Northwest District, Todd Steinberger, Assistant District Engineer, Development. Update on the status of the I-40, I-11, US-93 system interchange, West Kingman. All yours.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the West Kingman TI. Right now, we're currently working on wrapping up right-of-way acquisition. We just got done late spring with the geotechnical investigation. The 60% design plans will come out in October of this year. And then the 95% design plans will come out spring of next year, and then we should wrap up the design in October, fall next year. And then we're anticipated to have construction in August of 2023. And the total program amount is $66 million. You know, we did an enhanced DCR to kind of re-divisite the design to improve constructability, look at potential cost savings, improve egress and egress on Bill Street and the Stockton Hill traffic interchange, and extend the project limits on I-40 to include an additional third lane from the existing Bill TI to the Stockton Hill TI. This is kind of a brief picture of it. Then here's the, what the ramps, I-40 to US-93 is going to look like. You know, the Phase 1 is going to be, what's going to be constructed in August of 2023. It's going to convey the Las Vegas to Phoenix movements. And then we're going to, this is a brief picture of what it looks like down at Bill Street and US-93. It's going to provide a separated crossing to allow the downtown traffic move into downtown Kingman, but then keep the traffic moving from Vegas to Phoenix. Any questions?
Are you going to submit a copy of your presentation to the board so they have it for review?
Sure, I can.
Supervisor Angus, do you have any questions? Board members?
No, I would like to make a comment, though. I know, speaking for my constituents and everybody that travels through Kingman would like to see this done sooner than 2023, but I understand that there's steps that have to be taken prior to this. So thank you very much for the presentation and for getting it done as soon as possible.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they're going to add a third lane on the westbound I-40 from Stockton Hill to the interchange? Is that what I heard you say?
Both directions. Supervisor Gould?
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Todd, thank you for the presentation this morning. I know that that section of roadway right now is the most congested that we have in the Kingman area. And I thank ADOT for the investment there. I know that over the next three or four-year period, there's going to be significant capital investment. And this project, the construction, the loan, is, if I'm wrong, 70 million or a little above that, right?
Correct.
So I appreciate that, and I think everybody's going to see the city of Kingman with all this infrastructure investment that's going to go on in the next five-year period. It's going to be really changing us into a true regional hub. So I thank you for ADOT's participation in that.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the consent, items five through 33. We'll take in one motion unless somebody wants to pull an item. Supervisor Lingefelter, do you have any?
Nothing this morning, Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop?
Twenty-five and twenty-six.
Supervisor Angus?
Thirty-two.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent, items five through 33, minus items 25 and 26.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 25, Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. These, both these items are in regards to the Golden Valley Improvement District, well number one. So I see Steve Lakowski coming forward, and I just wanted an explanation as to what exactly we're doing on this and why we're doing it. This is information not only for the board members, but also for the public. Good morning, Steve, thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Johnson, members of the board, Supervisor Bishop. Regarding item 25, this is a follow-up and permanent closeout to the Well 1 rehabilitation and repair. What we acted on at the time Well 1 went down during that one week, we found and successfully installed a rebuilt motor. However, to expedite the installation and to get the system back online, we utilized the existing electric cables, which really, when changing out a motor, really needs to be considered to be changed out as well. So this initiative brings forward our old motor that will be rebuilt, as well as new electric cables, for a permanent solution. Now, what we'll do with the old motor, I don't even call it old, it was just mainly in for a few weeks' time, that existing motor that's in the ground will become a inventory motor, surplus motor, so that we have a motor on the shelf, ready to go if and when the well would happen to fail. And some years in the future, of course, what we'd be anticipating. So in summary, this affords the permanent repair and rehabilitation of Well 1 by placing a rebuilt motor, as well as compatible, brand-new electric cables. So, and that's per, you know, really the best practice. As for item 26, it is a.
The right person has left the conference. Chairman Johnson, she's going to drop off for just a second. They're trying to fix the sound real quick, so we can hear her better.
Do you know she has her online, so Mr. Tasker can continue? On the computer? Was that all you had on 25, Steve?
On 25, correct.
All right. We'll take that one and then go to 26. Okay. We're done with the explanation on item 25. Anything else, Supervisor Bishop?
No, but I've been asked the question why we did not have a replacement engine on standby or motor on standby? And is the situation with all of the wells in our various improvement districts, do we, do we have materials on hand in case of a breakdown such as this for other wells?
Supervisor Bishop, we have general repair materials on hand to attend to more minor interruptions in the water system. Some, many, many years ago, we used to have a contract with a company down in Phoenix. It was Alstra Motors, owned by, I guess they were a subsidiary of Weber. And what we had was a mechanism by which we would keep a backup motor at Alstra, because it needed, as all motors do, it needs certain care and maintenance, even when in inventory. The motor has to be quarter-turned about once every three months. So Alstra did all that for us. And then when we would have a well go down, we would be able to call upon that motor in inventory. Well, Alstra went out of business some many years ago, and as a result, we did not have a means for another third party to keep a motor on site. But we'll take on that responsibility, particularly for this very sensitive Well 1. We hope the system will eventually become redundant with bringing on board our Well 3, which is still in progress for drilling. This is less of an issue, of course, in the I-40, because we have a backbone of other well, wells that can adequately service a system if one were to go out.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that explanation, I'll make a motion that we approve item 25 with the Well Number 1 as written.
Second.
Further discussion? Supervisor Lingefelter?
One question, thank you, Chairman Johnson. Steve, did I hear you say, does it make sense to go back into a position of having a replacement motor to make sure that an incident like that isn't able to occur again? Either through contract or internally?
Supervisor Lingefelter, yes. And that's exactly what we're doing with this initiative, with this board item, that we will have a motor now in inventory. And with just a single motor, and we are well-staffed with talented individuals that we can take care of servicing and maintaining that motor so it's in good working condition, should it be called upon.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 26, Supervisor Bishop?
Same thing, Mr. Lakowski, if you could just explain to us why eliminating the separate service connection fee is a good thing for our customers?
Staff is advancing this recommendation primarily for new customer hookups to the system. This is a modification to the Golden Valley Improvement District policy and procedure. And as it stands today, the district adopts three different meter fees for new connections. There is a fixed $475 cost for meters sized up to three-quarter inch, and then we have that market rate for one-inch and two-inch meters. Then there's also a separate service connection fee at $354. So the lowest cost for any new customer, mind you, not existing, but new customers, for a meter and a service connection is $826. And staff advances a recommendation of a fixed fee for both meter and service connection, so this is both of them in one, of $1,000, regardless of the size of meter that is necessary. Oftentimes, we go out in the field, and we actually have to size it up in the field as far as what meter size. And having that amount upfront for new customers gives them really the peace of mind to plan around a new connection. And then, I confess, this is more of a rounding thing, but we are also recommending the board consider adopting a water deposit, again, for new customers, at $100 rather than $90. So $1,000 to connect and $100 for a water deposit, which is refundable.
Okay, it certainly simplifies it, because it's very confusing for customers and honestly for me to understand, too.
And the whole market rate thing, we would have to get back in touch with them with a price, and the customer's not seeing it upfront in the price schedule. Sometimes they're taken aback by a different price for a one-inch or two-inch. So it really just simplifies it across the board for us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number 32.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 32, Supervisor Angus?
Thank you for the reconsider, Chairman Johnson. I just have a question in the wording there. It says this is a Series 9 sampling privileges application. What is the difference between liquor license and sampling privilege? I just don't understand the meaning of that term very well.
Clerk of the Board?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, this is an applicant who already actually possesses a regular liquor license and can also qualify for the Series 9 application for sampling privileges. This is the first time you've seen this. We have not had one of these in the past, or at least not since I've been here. But he does qualify under all of the restrictions set forth by AD LLC.
What is a sampling privilege? What does that mean? We're talking right through the door.
Sampling privilege would mean, like, if you wanted to buy a bottle of wine but wanted to sample it first, he has the ability to allow you to have a small sample.
Well, that's interesting. Okay. That's making a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, item number 35, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-100. Have anybody from the public who would wish to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 36, I will open the public hearing. This is an adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-101. Anyone from the public wish to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 37, I will open the public hearing. This is adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-102. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, with this item, I'd like to request that the board postpone until the second meeting of July. I'll be going up to the area to inspect this with staff this week. I'd make a motion that we postpone to the July 19th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 38, I'll open the public hearing. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-103. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, I'd make a motion that we postpone this item as well to the July 19th meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 39, I'll open the public hearing. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-104. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 40, public hearing. Resolution 2021-105. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 41, is a public hearing, which I will open. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-106. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 42, is a public hearing, which I will open. Discussion, possible action, Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-107. I have the public, Don Lennox.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors.
Can you give your address, sir? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Don Lennox. I reside in Bullhead City, Arizona, and I'm here just representing our requested zone change for any questions or concerns.
Are there any questions? We have no questions, sir.
I have a question, since you've traveled all the way here. Do you want to explain to us a little bit about what it is that you're planning and what kind of security you might have out there, or anything you would like us to know?
Yes, ma'am. First off, I'll tell you that we are an existing 38-acre farm. We have been for the past 15 years. We are currently farming almonds on 34 of our 36 acres. It's been extremely challenging in Golden Valley with the soil and the high winds we received. We received a lot of high wind, right at our peak flowering season this year. Each time we lose flowers, we lose almonds. So we're forced pretty much right now to stay in farming. We're forced to be a little bit more diversified in the way we're trying to farm. In doing so, we're trying to adapt cannabis in a hybrid farm state, trying to grow both cannabis and almonds on our farm. We've got three neighbors that border our farm property. I've spent time with all of them to communicate our intentions, and I included them in the process to hear our concerns and any personal. process to hear our concerns and any personal viewpoint on cannabis. And in preparation for changes per state regulations and fencing, we have installed a good portion of our front fence line with privacy fence in order to let the neighbors know what it's going to look like once we do adapt, and if we're approved, to do a site planned and to change that fence to what's going to be required, which is a 10-foot privacy fence. You know, this new way of farming, I think it's rather unique. I mean, if we're able to get this done, you know, there are a lot of, we're losing a lot of crops in our United States right now to other countries. And if we're able to get this thing approved and it's publicized, I truly think that we may be able to provide our farmers, maybe across the United States where this type of stuff is approved and legal, a way to sustain themselves during hardship and maybe keep and retain some of our crops here in the U.S. You know, and just for future consideration, I think there are many things I've learned in this cannabis stages of trying to get approved and learn what is necessary of the state of Arizona. And the one thing I did learn, I'd like to at least be considered for future consideration, is that there's a lot of focus on privacy, there's a lot of focus on security, but there are a lot of people coming here to take advantage of the cannabis laws and our new way of thinking here in Arizona. But I haven't seen much of us asking anything back from them, you know, in the form of, not just taxation and employment, because I think that's a given, right? There's a lot of taxes involved in the cannabis game, but I think that asking them to grow a small percentage of their property, to provide a resource back to the local community they grow and prospering is not much to ask for. And I just, I wanted to ask that of the board, you know, in future consideration, if we can ask those people that are coming to our state to provide something back to the people in local communities in the form of something other than cannabis, I think that'd be wonderful, you know? And I just want to thank all you for your service, and just say, I think it's really kind of symbolic that we're discussing something so revolutionary on a day just two days past the celebration of our Declaration of Independence. So, just like I had.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And is this part of your executive board in the audience?
Pardon me?
Is this part of your executive board in the audience?
Well, no, yeah, my son, my son is here.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, and I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lingefelder.
Chairman Johnson, thank you. Sir, may I ask just a couple of questions as well? Thank you very much. So, I understand the item, you're currently growing almond trees right now, and you're looking to transition a portion of your acreage to cannabis, is that correct? Do you know water consumption, how almond trees raise to cannabis? Did this cannabis use more or less water than an almond tree?
They use less water. I'll tell you now, it's kind of interesting fact that each almond, from its infancy through its duration of its life cycle, takes approximately one gallon of water. So, if you were to multiply that across the field, it's a heck of a lot of water for almonds. And I think the most challenging thing is, just like farming is an experiment, you have to do what you can to try to do things on a small scale, then you try to grow that on a larger scale. I think the one thing we're trying to do right now is not only trying to save, we've had a lot of loss this year in trees, damage to UV and damage because of the high wind. And, you know, we've got, we're five years into this now, and we've yet to sustain a viable crop, you know? So, by growing this cannabis, it not only gives us the wherewithal to keep going, but gives us something else to substantiate our farm.
Sure. Well, I'm not into agriculture, I'd like to try to get my mind wrapped around this. How much less water does?
Percentage-wise, I really couldn't tell you, to be quite honest with you, but I do know that it takes us a lot of water. We have four zones on our farm right now. We currently throw down about 18,000 gallons per cycle, per zone, and we have four zones. So, and right now, we've done a lot of things on our farm to help consumption, as well as power consumption. We've installed some new electronics, we've got a variable frequency drive now that slows our pump down, down to a percentage. We were pumping 80 pounds when I first came to the farm, we're now pumping 25 pounds of pressure, and we're trying to regulate that in what we actually need. We've installed sensors in the ground, aerometer sensors that we can dial into from the web and monitor exactly what we need so we're not throwing down too much water, and then trying to consume less energy. And it managed to be reclassified now from middle-size or medium-size business down to small business, just based upon the energy and consumption we've already decreased.
Great. Well, I'd like to thank you for your use of technology in our arid environment. Obviously, water's an issue, and for sure going to continue to be, so appreciate it. And thank you for coming up.
No further questions, do we have a motion?
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Better close the public hearing then, all right.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve this rezon.
We have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 42, I'll open the public hearing. This is on Mojave County Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-107. Same gentleman, Don Lennox, signed up for it.
Supervisor Johnson.
Let me see, anybody else like to address the board? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Supervisor Bishop.
I believe we're on item 44, or should be.
Did I mark it down wrong?
It'd be on 43.
On 43.
43 was just approved.
42.
Right, 42 was approved, we're on 43.
We're on 43 now.
Okay.
Is that what I called out? Right, okay.
Sorry.
All right. And there's no one from the public who wants to address the board, item 43? And it's closed. Do we have a motion?
Chairman Johnson, I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 44, is a public hearing, Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-110. This is for the denial of a rezon of the possessors' parcel, number 310-12-076 and 310-12-077. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson, there's a motion to, for the adoption of the U.S. Resolution 2021-110, denial of a rezon.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 45, is a public hearing, Board of Supervisors Ordinance Number 2021-05. This is amendment to the Mojave County zoning ordinance. I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone from the public who wishes to address this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
Chairman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Johnson, supervisors, I do have a comment on this particular ordinance, and I call your attention to, under the general provisions, what used to be paragraph I on removing the absolute indemnification and liability insurance. When this went to the commission through an error on my part, we had this paragraph taken out. I have since discussed this with our insurance pool people, and they strongly recommend that we leave this in here, and the reason being that about 15 years ago, there were some issues where there were special event sponsors that were being sued for things that happened at their special event, and they were bringing in the counties as being named in the lawsuit. So, as you're aware, every time we are named in a lawsuit, we're on the hook for $75,000 deductible for legal fees. So, in order to avoid that, and in order to be sure that the special events that are, you know, having a large number of people and may have some events there that could be hazardous, that we leave this in here as is, I strongly recommend that we do that.
Any questions?
Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I'm going to direct my question to Manager Elters. I'm not sure who this would go to, but as a part of this, it looks like we're going from, you know, 30 days, 45 days, normal special event approval process down to what we're calling an expedited two-week process for an additional sum of money. I believe that's correct. Can we, I guess my question is, when you were polling around and asking other jurisdictions what their standard operating procedure is and what their normal timeframe is, to me it would seem two weeks would be more on par with just what the county does anyways for a public event. I think asking someone to start, you know, a couple of months beforehand is kind of a long time.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelder, we, the typical process and what we had prior to this modification to allow for an expedited review, ultimately, it allowed for staff to work with the number of various departments and other jurisdictions to coordinate these larger events. So, the intention was, if they came to us with sufficient time, we could work with the sheriff's office, we could work with public health, we could work with whoever was involved BLM at times. And by allowing that additional time, it allowed that process to work smoothly, to be able to work out all those kinks. What we found was, some of the applicants were not aware of that additional time needed to be able to work through all of the particulars of those events. So, what we came up with is, we looked at, and working with County Manager Elters, we looked at, okay, what is the quickest timeframe we could provide this? If someone wasn't aware of it and they have this event that they want to have occur, what is the quickest timeframe we could provide that in? And that's what we've come up with with this resolution, is to allow for that quicker timeframe. The next item that you have before you is an increase in the fee for that to allow for the expedited review, and the purpose of that is ultimately, in that short timeframe, we still have to bring that special event before the board. So, we'll need to reach out to all of these various departments, do that groundwork that typically the applicant will do a lot of that work themselves. It's not guaranteeing that we'll get it before the board in time, but if we get a completed submittal, that we will do all of that extra legwork to try and get it here in time.
Great, I appreciate it. Yep. I have a little bit of experience with this back in, I think it was January, February, we were able to capitalize on Clark County's overarching and significant COVID restrictions, and we stole snore away from them, and we did some big off-road races, simply because it's easier to hold an event in Mojave County than it was in Clark County, and I don't see that changing. So, I mean, having regulations that are easy to navigate and to get through in a timely manner is, it puts Mojave County in a competitive position compared to places like Clark County and places like that. And I'm happy to steal more events away from Clark County from using our regulations against theirs, so thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Do you have more questions, Supervisor Lingefelder?
No, Chairman, thank you.
I have questions on this, and the direct opposite on this. I don't know what possessed you to decide to try to make a change in this, but if anybody's planning on putting an event with 250 people or more, they have to have plans way in advance to put this on, and the first thing would be to get a venue. Anytime somebody gets a venue, they know they have to get permits, or they're not much of an event provider. The expedited, I see nothing but problems with that. I mean, if somebody has a problem like Supervisor Lingefelder's talking about, they can come before the board and we're familiar with the events, and they have all their ducks in a row because that's something they do, I have no problem approving that, but the idea that we're going to start letting events of 250 or more get down to the wire before we know about it and can make sure that our sheriffs and health department, everybody do it, I don't agree with that, but that was just mine.
Chairman Johnson, if I may, and I want to just emphasize that we're not guaranteeing that that will, that that event will occur. It's really just a matter of, we will do everything we can, as long as they provide us the information we need in order to get it to the board in time for that event to occur, so.
Mr. Chairman, board members.
I mean, County Manager.
The idea started in January when we had a request, as Supervisor Lingefelder alluded to, and I think at the heart of this item is the desire to accommodate those events and the event planners. With that said, we want to accommodate them in the safest, most orderly way we can. It really requires a complete submittal to start with for us to review, to determine which department is involved. Sometimes it's just county, various county departments, sometimes it requires coordinating with the Bureau of Land Management or other agencies. So, in order to make sure that information requested and follow-ups or info is received, somebody has to spend time on it above and beyond their daily duties. And so, we don't always get it in time. We want it to set up this expedited process where we, recognizing that somebody didn't start the process in time, but is willing to step through hoops to provide us a complete submittal and information, we want it to be able to accommodate them, clearly not undermining the process, but staying within the process, but ensuring that we're, you know, we're doing, we're following all the steps, including coming to the board. So, it's really, it's voluntary, it does require additional effort, and those are the efforts that we want to compensate our, the county and the staff for them. If somebody is planning ahead, as you indicated, Chairman, we will be happy to follow the normal process with them and work with them and use what we have currently, but if somebody needs, for whatever reason, to expedite, we can accommodate them as well. The intent of the day is be flexible, work with them, be accommodating, but make sure safety and public health are at the heart of what we're doing. Thank you.
I guess it just scares me that we had Mr. Stewart come forward, that we would even consider taking the indemnification off. It makes me wonder about the whole process that went through to put this together, if we're even doing it and protecting the county, because the county should always be identified on anything that goes out. That's just my opinion. Any others have any questions?
Chairman Johnson, just one more comment. I think, in my mind, I draw a distinction between events that are proposed to be held on public property, you know, county, state, BLM, and private property. And for those events, like we had on the snore event earlier this year, which was held completely on private property, I'm just looking and hoping that people are allowed to do what they want to do on their private land with very minimal regulation. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, did I close the public hearing? I think I did. It's a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Supervisor Angus.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Chairman Johnson, if I may, ask Supervisor Angus to amend her motion to maintain the indemnification and insurance in there. Currently, the motion before you is to remove those items, or currently, the way it's worded is to remove those items.
I would, as Tim said, I would just, leaving in the entire language that was scratched out in paragraph I of the general provisions, just leaving that in.
Supervisor Angus, were you able to hear that?
I need to confirm that it's a reasonable.
I'm sorry, can you restate it? You're breaking for some reason, Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, you know, I have a connection to this, but someone else can make the motion.
I think she said someone else can make the motion. Thank you, Supervisor Angus. Does anyone else on the board want to make a motion?
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a motion to approve the item with the addition of Byron's requested inclusion of insurance and indemnity clauses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 46, I'll open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of amendment to the Mojave County Ordinance 2018-03 to add special event permit fees. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 47 is a public hearing, which I will open, adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
May I ask Director Walsh to come back up? Tim, this is in the City of Kingman service area. Can, did you reach out to the City of Kingman? Do they have any sort of assistance programs for people that would fall into this?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelter, yes. We reached out to the city engineer, Phil Allred, and asked him about any possible assistance programs that the city has. The city does offer a sewer connection assistance program to help residents who cannot afford to pay for the connection costs upfront. Basically explained as an incentive to participate in the program, there's a one-time waiver of the drainage fixture unit fee and any city-owned paybacks. The program has a cap of $10,000 per applicant. The program is a loan program that will be paid back over time, no longer than 10 years, and allow those, the, the interest will be charged at the U.S. prime rate at the time of the promissory notice signed. There's some eligibility requirements and a few, a few other, I guess I can go through all that. The applicant must be creditworthy, residential property owner on septic, and they must reside on the property. They must have homeowner's insurance at the time of application, they must have a water account in good standing, and they must be current on their property taxes, so.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Walsh. This 100-foot hookup, is that just to the main sewer line, or are they requiring people to hook, to put the main sewer line in, in part of that 100-foot?
Chairman Johnson, I, I believe, I guess, just to clarify on the question, is the, is the sewer line you're asking, if, if they're required to extend the sewer line?
Yes.
Yeah, that is correct. So, basically, if, if their property is with 100 feet of an existing sewer main, they would be required to extend that sewer main 100 feet to be able to allow for sewer connection to their property.
So, they'll only have to hook up to it, they have to put the line in. So, if...
That's correct.
I'm 100-foot away, Supervisor Lingefelter's 200-foot away, and they forced me to put one in 100-foot, then I force Supervisor Lingefelter to put the next 200-foot, and he does it, and then Supervisor Goul has to do it, and pretty soon, we've paid for all of Kingman's sewer system?
I, I guess to an extent, basically, if, depending on who, who installs first, if Supervisor Lingefelter's 200 feet away, he installs a septic system before you come in, he would be good on a septic system. However, if, if you installed and that sewer line's extended 100 feet, and he's 100 feet from that sewer line, then, then he would be required to.
I, I thought that everybody that, at least the way I've seen it in the past, once the line gets to you, whether you have a sewer septic tank or not, you are required to hook into the system. That's kind of what makes it work.
That, that is correct. Currently, ADQ requirements, if there's a sewer line at your property, at your property line, at the property corner, you are required to connect it once your, your septic fails. So, if they have an existing septic system and the sewer line gets extended, they're not required to connect at that point, but they, we would not issue any future septic permits. So, basically, once their fail septic, once their, catch my words here, once their septic system fails, they would not be eligible to, to get another septic permit to replace that. If the sewer line's at their, at their, as it currently stands with this, if they're within 100 feet, then they would be required to extend it.
Okay, Supervisor Lingefelter, is there?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Tim, in that scenario that was just described, does the city have a repayment provision that goes into, or goes back to that resident that falls into that situation? I mean, so their neighbors can't capitalize on their investment?
Yes, and I don't know all of the details of, of their payback agreement, but, but yes, there is a payback. Basically, if, for example, if the sewer line were extended, anybody connecting to that extended sewer line would be eligible, or the initial person would be eligible to receive payback from those, from those persons connecting to it.
In layman's terms, there's no free lunch, right? You're gonna, you're gonna pay for my investment.
That's correct. I, I believe it's a, I want it, there's a time limit on it. I want to say 20 years, but I'm not 100% on that, but there is a time limit. So, if I wait that, that 20 years until that time's up, then I could connect and, and get the free lunch, but that's a long time to wait for, for a free connection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager.
Just a quick reminder, this is a, this is not a widespread situation. It's limited to this area north of the City of Kingman, known as the Butler area, and it's an area where the city provides water as well. The city's initial request was 500 feet from sewer. We discussed that with the city at the various levels, and in the process, ADQ was contacted as well for an opinion. We came back believing that 100 feet is a more reasonable number than the 500 feet, given the cost to extend a line 500 feet and the cost of residences and improvements in this area. So, this is, this is not widespread, it is limited. We, we think 100 is reasonable, and one thing to also keep in mind as you contemplate this decision is this is an area with significant amount of septic systems. It's fairly dense, and ultimately, the vision is to connect to sewer systems that provide some relief from septic systems going into the ground. So, just wanted to remind you of that as well.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I see Colin in the audience. Can I have you come up to the podium really quick? Thank you. Colin, could you describe the situation out there? I've driven out there several times, and the lots are, there's a lot of very small lots, and if, they all have sewer or septic systems. Could you explain it a little bit to me?
Sure, sure, I can explain that. They're, they're generally 5,000-square-foot lots. They come in, they apply for a septic permit, we generally give it to them if they have room. You have many systems out there due to the age of the lots and age of the improvements that are failing. There's some lots out there, they've tried to squeeze three systems in on. You can't just put a septic system on top of your old one, specific to the, the leach field. You can, of course, replace the tank. So, they've got to move that around. So, there's not a lot of space. On top of that, you know, one of the questions that's come up is, you know, is there a problem? What would ADQ do about that? And all I can say to that is, you know, under certain circumstances, the, the way that ADQ would look at it and the way I would look at analyzing the problem is, you know, to try and compare apples to apples. And so, if you had just hypothetically, for instance, a 240-space RV park on a 20-acre parcel, or you had 5,000-square-foot lots on a 20-acre parcel, those 5,000-square-foot lots would generate more nitrogen to the subsurface than the RV park. Yet, the RV park with 240 watts would have to put in all kinds of pretreatment and limit their nitrogen to 39 milligrams per acre per day, whereas the, the 5,000-square-foot lots with less lots than there are RV spaces, by the way. I, I think I, the scenario I looked at was potentially a 70% lot yield on that 20 acres would generate somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10 times more nitrogen than the RV park is allowed to generate over the same-sized piece of property. So, do we have a problem? I'm not sure. I believe that we have two of these septic tanks out there. They're, they're, a lot of them are in failure due to lack of maintenance, lack of pumping, lack of a lot of things. We don't catch them until they're, you know, catastrophically fail, and you've got bubbling up sewage in people's backyards, flowing into the alley into Devlin Wash or, or somewhere else like that. So, that's the situation we find ourselves in with that area. I would say there's, there's thousands of septic tanks out there, maybe, maybe over 10,000.
Wow, that's a lot. And ADQ, I mean, that's, that's always a threat that they're going to step in, but is there any risk of, I mean, how does this all play into the water table out there?
Well, I mean, once you start spiking nitrates in your water table, they look to where that's, that's, that's coming from. The most recent example that I can think of is the City of Kingman's sewer treatment plant. They were spiking nitrates in their, their, and don't quote me on the specifics, I just kind of know about this on the periphery of the issue. They were spiking nitrates in, in one of their monitoring wells. The argument was very well made, as I understand it, that, hey, you know, this is the desert, sometimes you get that as a natural occurrence. However, the city chose, and probably rightly so, that, hey, we need to take our destiny into our own hands and make this large investment to stave off any action by either ADQ or the EPA. So, if we have, now, we don't have monitoring wells for Butler. I don't know of any high nitrate, nitrate readings out there, other than, there's got to be, there's, there's a lot, a lot of nitrogen being put into the, into the soil because of the density of septic systems. But once you have high nitrates, I mean, the, the water, you, you need to be really careful. I mean, that, there, there's a reason they, they, they have nitrates, is one of the things they look for, and that's because there's some immediate health effects having to do, I believe, with the absorption of oxygen and everything else. Now, is that happening out there right now? I don't believe so.
We wouldn't know because we don't monitor that, right?
We wouldn't know.
But the City of Kingman issue, the situation that you described, that was the same, same region, is what we're talking about now?
Yes, it was. Just, just north of there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a question for, for Colin, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Bishop.
Can ADQ or EPA require the county to abandon septic tanks in a particular area if there is a concentration of, of nitrate or saturation into our subsurface?
I believe, I believe they could, yes.
Okay.
Now, if they, they haven't even threatened to do that, by the way. They're just remotely aware of the density out there. I've discussed it with them and some potential solutions and problems specific to, you know, whether, you know, certain alternative systems would work, that type of thing, but we haven't received any communication from them that that would happen, but I believe they could if they, if we, a problem was identified, yes.
Okay, are there concerns that the contamination, the nitrate contamination, will seep further down and, and maybe taint our aquifer water?
I would say something like that is always a possibility. Whether there's any immediate alarm concerns, we don't monitor it, so I don't know. You know, the aquifer is, is deep, but, but really how deep? I mean, you, you've got, you know, your levels at which you drill at to get enough water for your home, and then you have the levels that the City of Kingman drills at to get enough water for municipal production well and others out there as well. So, I don't know that the, I, I don't have a good answer to that question.
Mr. Chairman.
Academically, yes, I'm concerned that it could happen.
County Manager.
We have no reason to believe that this is a dire situation. We have no data, no studies to point in that direction. My reference to the density of the septic system was just that, that this is an area with dense, but we have no data indicating that we have a, a problem on our hand with nitrate reaching into our aquifer.
That, that's correct.
Thank you. And County Manager, is there an opportunity here for us to, as a county, spend some of our federal funding that is coming in to help alleviate some of these problems as far as connections or extending sewer lines further into the county?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, yes. We, there's been inquiry from the board related to that. We have, I have asked the county attorney's office to review that and provide an opinion, and the opinion result is yes, we can, if, if a board member or the county chooses to do so. And I believe there is an appetite to work with the City of Kingman in partnership to, to advance some of those sewer lines and provide better access to them. So, yes, that is something that I think we, as a county, could certainly pursue with the board guidance.
Okay, thank you, and I would certainly be supportive of, of that concept. One last question, Colin. In your professional opinion, because you deal with, with septic, that's part of your job, do you think this, this county ordinance should be approved?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Goul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colin, can you provide any examples of ADQ revoking septic tank permits in an area?
I cannot. The most recent one, and I'm only like slightly aware of this, because this is well before my time, was the moratorium they had down near, near Topock that was rescinded. They had, and don't quote me on the specifics, but there were some issues, and they, they did at least try to take some affirmative steps to see that the density of systems was addressed by the use of alternative systems, and that's no longer happening.
The two that come to mind are, were both municipal systems. One was the City of Page built a settling pond without getting a permit from ADQ. The other was Bullhead City that had a leaking sewer system. Those are the two that come to mind to me. You mentioned alternative systems, which is an alternative for this area.
It is.
If we're concerned about nitrate levels, then we might want to move to, to denitrifying septic tanks. My concern is the, the long-term cost of people paying for sewer fees, since in Lake Havasu City, for every dollar of water that you purchase, you pay about $7.25 to get rid of that water. I can tell you, I can run my septic system cheaper than that with pumping every four years, which is what I did on my rental houses before the voters forced me to connect to a sewer and put me in debt of $30,000 for each property that I own. But that's also another alternative. There's also ways that you could reuse that water on your own property for irrigation also.
You cannot reuse black water in the state of Arizona yet. You can, you can reuse all the gray water you wish to, to use, but there are no provisions for treating black water and reusing it, with the exception of you can use as your disposal system. So, in replacing your leach field, you can use certain subsurface drip irrigation measures, and that's pretty much it.
When I was in the legislature, we actually created a tax credit for dual piping of new homes, where you would separate, you never combined the black water and the gray water together. That way, it allowed you to easily use a gray water irrigation system in your house, which is something we might want to take a look at also, but thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Colin. The cities like Kingman, Havasu, and them, they asked for the service area, correct? Service area isn't forced on them.
I believe so. I'm not, I'm not sure.
I guess that's the problem I have, because somebody asks for a service area, much like Sutton Link puts lines in front of, in front of the house, I don't have to hook up to them if I don't want to. I don't have to pay for them to run their main.
I, I...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you how the service area developed out there. I just know for, in my, my memory, I've lived here my entire life, they've always had city water out in the Butler area to one extent or another.
Right. And the sewer, that's what bothers me, is now they, they put a sewer in, and they probably bonded like everybody else, and they did it, and they had a reason not to extend it into Butler, even though the Butler area was part of the area, and now they're going to force people to put the main line in, when that main line, far as I'm concerned, should be paid for by all the users, and then... concerned, should be paid for by all the users, and then the, the cost is recouped because you have more people on the, on the system. That's the only part that bothers me. Any other questions? Supervisor Angus?
No questions.
Do you have a motion?
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor.
Motion to adopt Mojave County Ordinance Number 2021-04.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries. Item 48, this is discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion from the board?
Chairman Johnson, I will make a motion that we authorize the Mojave County Attorney's Office to cast the Mojave County's ballot in favor of accepting the Fifth Amendment Joint Chapter 11 Plan of Reorganization on the Purdue Pharmacy and its affiliated debits in the bankruptcy action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 49. Is the public health here to update us?
just my usual update to start with and then go through the case investigation contact tracing report. So as of last Friday, we have had 21,556 cases of COVID in our county to date. We have 22,138 people that have been hospitalized during that timeframe, 656 deaths, 18,229 people have recovered. The average age of cases has been 47.3, average age of deaths 74.8. Our case fatality rate has always hovered around 3%, so for the entire epidemic. Population ever with COVID in the county is 10.1% of our population. The percent of tests that were positive during, and this again extends over the entire time of the, of the pandemic, is 15.2%. Our current rate sits at about 15% right now, just a little bit over, I believe it's 15.7 as of today, or percent positivity. And across all of Mojave County, there's been an increase in cases from May to June of about 80%. So we, from May to June, we've seen an 80% increase in the cases. So, to kind of carry that over a little bit, total cases, 20% or 24%, we've seen a 24% increase over the last full week, one week to another. And the week ending June 26 had the highest number of cases since February. The deaths that were reported the weeks ending 619 and 626 had earlier, thank you, had earlier diagnosis dates and therefore did not appear on the graph that we have on our, on our table and on our webpage. When looking at actual date of death, however, the week ending 619 had seven deaths and the week ending 626 had one death. Some trends that are of concern and of issue moving forward, we've seen an increase in cases in all age groups. Less than five years old, we've seen a 225% increase. Now, what's important to note, of course, is that number is fairly low anyway. So we had 13 cases from four cases, so we had an increase of nine cases there. In the five to 19-year-old, we have a 65% increase in cases. 20 to 20, 20 to 44-year-olds, we have 127% increase in cases, which is our more significant, that's 120 cases to 272 cases. 45 to 54, 54-year-olds, a 60% increase. 55 to 64-year-olds, a 64% increase, and the 65-plus has been a 33% increase in cases from 64 to 85 cases. If we break that out by service area, what we're seeing is no increase in the Bullhead City area, 62.3% increase in the Kingman service area, 268% increase in the Lake Havasu City area, and an actual decrease in cases in the North County area. But keeping in mind that we're going, in that particular case, from three cases in May to two cases in June, so statistically you can see that that 33% reduction is also a very low number, contrary to some of the others. In the last couple of months, our testing burden has decreased significantly from, we've had 4,582 people tested in the last five weeks compared to 5,285 people tested in the previous five weeks. So we're seeing the number of people tested going down. And those groups that are being tested are, are places like long-term care facilities, assisted living facilities, skilled nursing facilities, and others that, that test on a regular basis per requirement. So if you consider that, then the number of people that are being tested out in the public is even lower still because those tests are counted within this. Combined with that, we have low vaccination rates in our different age groups. In our under 20 population, 3.7% have received at least one dose. In our 20 to 34 group, we have 16.6% that have received at least one dose. 35 to 44 is 23.1%. 45 to 54, 27.7. 55 to 64, 40.7. And then our Our vaccine numbers, we do continue to have, just want to emphasize the point that we have a, an abundance of vaccines still available, available in our community. It's available at Walmarts and Walgreens, CVS, all of those normal pharmacies are available for vaccinating. And that's the transition that's being made, similar to how flu is handled, is that to try to have that available at all doctors' offices, pharmacies, and so forth, so it'll be easy for anybody to, to request and, and receive that vaccination. We have had 141,510 vaccines administered in our county to date. The total number of people who have received at least one dose, it's at about 80,411. The percent of our population vaccinated in our county is 37.1%. And the number of people who are fully vaccinated against COVID is right about 67,300, give or take. In the hospital report, transmission continues to remain high in Mojave County. I did review other counties, sister counties basically around us, who are experiencing much lower numbers than our county at this point. We compare to Penal County is really what we can look at as far as numbers. Our, our case numbers relate very closely with Penal County, and they have twice the population that we do. So that's of concern. Inpatient beds average 96% full in Mojave County. 6.8 of those are COVID-positive patients as of the Fourth of July. Arizona inpatient beds comparatively are 80% full, 88% full, and 6% positive COVID. ICU beds average 80, 84% full in Mojave County with 29, 23.9% COVID-positive cases, again, as of the Fourth of July. And if you compare that with Arizona numbers, Arizona ICU beds are 86% full with 8% COVID-positive patients. Of recent concern are the variants, and I'm sure you've heard a lot of this out in the news and the media lately. Let me get to my correct page here, my notes, please. So just for clarification, because I don't know that everybody's aware of how these, what, what a variant is. I think it's important for people to understand that. When a virus mutates or acquires a change to its genetic code, this creates a variant. Variants arise frequently, and some may impact transmissibility, severity, effectiveness of current vaccines, and treatment options. Variants have specific genetic markers that are predicted to impact transmission, diagnostics, and treatment. Identifying and tracking variants will help us understand if or to what degree the change is a threat, adaptation of vaccines to address the variant, and improved diagnostic tests to ensure we can detect the virus through testing and assist with treatment. So it's, it's important that we track these. The state is, has contracted several providers to do genetic sequencing on about 5% of the total tests that are submitted. And so this is a pretty low number. And obviously, if you, if you find that you have any of these particular variants in your community, you can make an assumption, of course, that you will have a greater degree than what you see in just 5% of your tests. So the Delta variant was additional, initially identified in India in December of 2020, and first detected in the United States in March of 2021. According to the CDC and World Health Organization, the variant didn't raise alarms until India faced a major COVID-19 surge this spring when it became a variant of concern, which escalates it from just one of interest. As, as they learn more about it and its transmissibility is of greater concern, then they'll kind of raise the flag up a little further. Studies indicate the Delta variant is 40 to 60% more transmissible than the UK variant, which was already 50% more transmissible than the original viral strain first detected in China. A study in Scotland, published in The Lancet, found the hospitalization rate of patients with that variant was about 85% higher than that of people with the Alpha variant, which is the UK variant. There's not enough data at this point to say if this Delta variant is more deadly than other variants. The research is ongoing, and we'll learn more over time. So some specifics here in our county. We did request some additional information from the Arizona Department of Health Services. As of the First of July, Mojave County represented 25.4% of the Delta variants detected in Arizona. 27% of those cases were hospitalized, 6% of these cases died, 9% were vaccine breakthrough cases, meaning that person was fully vaccinated and still acquired the, the virus. And that, those collection dates, just so that you're aware of that, were from May 18th to the 10th of June. So. The variants in, of concern in Mojave County by month have transitioned, of course, from the UK variant to this Delta variant over time. The California variant was also in there as well. Again, we anticipate that this will actually be the dominant variant in the coming month, and will need to take steps to ensure that we're reducing the spread of this virus in any way possible and keep those case counts down. Of course, I'll just reiterate the importance of the steps that people can take to prevent a surge in cases is wearing a face covering or mask, physical distancing, getting vaccinated, avoiding crowds in poorly ventilated spaces, washing your hands often, covering your cough and sneezes, clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces, monitoring your own health, and be alert for symptoms, and stay home if you are sick. All things that continue to be important in the prevention of COVID-19 and many other viruses.
Director Burley?
Certainly.
I've seen this list several times, and I'm always curious why things like, I've heard that most patients of COVID have been deficient in things like vitamin D and things like that. Are those not recommended also to, to watch your nutrition and to exercise and those types of things? Those are also preventative measures, aren't they?
I think anytime we're looking at viruses in a person's health, we're always looking at preventative, which is ensuring that you're, you're taking all the steps to keep yourself healthy. And exercise and good nutrition are all part of that, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, certainly. Any questions on all the data I just provided to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, you spoke of 9% breakthrough.
Correct.
Were they tracking any numbers on reinfection? Someone that had naturally acquired immunity and was then reinfected with the Delta variant?
Supervisor Gould, I believe they are tracking that. I just don't have those numbers for you to present today. If you'd like, I can try to get some additional information from ADHS.
Sure. I would assume A is what came out of Wuhan, China, and then D, we're working our way through the alphabet of the variants?
Actually, A is the UK variant.
Okay.
So what came out of China was the original virus strain, and then from there you start seeing the numbering sequence of the variants.
So we call them that, the Wuhan one W then, or?
They just call it original strain.
O S. Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
All right. Okay. Per the board's request, we'll provide some information. I provided you the actual report last week on case investigations, contact tracing, and lessons learned. Along with lessons learned, I also wanted to include a section on what went well, because while we did learn a lot, and you would with any kind of new novel virus response, you don't know what you don't know until you get into it, and then you start adapting your, your response and activities around what you learn each day. And as you are well aware, things changed pretty frequently. So, so case investigations and contact tracing, combined with all other preventative strategies, were most affected to prevent COVID-19. Mojave County Department of Public Health attempted to reach infected persons, considered a case, interview them, and instruct them to isolate from others. In the case interviews, staff also identified contacts who were exposed to the case, contacted those individuals, and instructed them to quarantine, and gave them the, the recommended guidance at the time. As you know, a contact in this instance is referred to a person who the case came in contact with, then six feet for more than 15 minutes, and that ended up, over time, changing to cumulative, not just in one duration. Initially, when this pandemic started, as you were again well aware, turnaround time for testing, getting results, investigate, and investigating improved greatly over time. The chart actually indicates this as well. The time it took for a test to be sent to a lab, analyzed by the lab, and a result found went from 11 days in March 2020, so 11 days meant they were already beyond their isolation period if they were positive. This was due to, and it dropped This was due to, and it dropped from that eleven days in March 2020 to a half a day, basically point six days in June 2021. Much of this was due to an increase in lab capacity. As you know, the labs were overwhelmed with tests and were unable to actually process those tests within a reasonable amount of time, obviously. They just did not have the capacity. So over time, that capacity was increased significantly, and there were better systems developed over time for those tests to be moved to those testing facilities so that they could be tested more, more quickly. By the same token, reporting times to public health organizations decreased as well. In the pandemic's first peak, June through July 2020, reporting times could be as long as nine to ten days before we actually received results. In June 2021, the time between an individual's test and the report to our department was down to less than two days. So a significant improvement in both the system and the process that's been used over Investigation times and completeness changed greatly over time as well. Nursing and epidemiology staff and the case investigators dedicated themselves to reaching as many cases and contacts as possible and getting them into isolation and quarantine. There were some challenges to that. We had incorrect contact information for some. We had no contact information for some. We had people who would not call us back. We had instances where we were unable to contact them for that very reason. You know, we can call and call and call, but we do require that people call us back if they don't pick up their phone initially. We'd leave messages and messages, and eventually you just kind of have to move on and just try to provide whatever guidance you can over the phone in a message, and then move on to the next case. When the board approved additional staff, and we were also given additional money from ADHS, the ELC grant which you all approved, we were able to hire and train the remote investigators. And at that point, there were enough investigators to handle the caseload, and there were new systems developed by ADHS to capture more detailed information using a different system than Medsys called Qualtrics. And this allowed for more flexibility. Medsys is very inflexible, and it's, it's great for collecting data, but it also doesn't help connect some dots, and I'll explain that in greater detail as we go along. So the Qualtrics survey was used by the remote investigators, and our staff generally were using, so nurses and, and maybe some of the Epi staff were using Medsys still, because they were dealing more with long-term care facility cases, school cases, and those that required a little bit, well, not a little bit, they required a greater intervention many times. And we also wanted to ensure that we had our nurses working on these cases, because they were working with school administrators, school nurses, nurses within facilities, and so it just made for a better relationship, and they could provide additional information when needed, as well as work on mitigation strategies within those environments. Additionally, ADHS hired case investigators and contact tracers to assist counties. They hired at one point over six hundred investigators to assist with investigations, because even with what we had, and you all approved, I believe, ten, and then the coordinator, at, at the height in, in December, January, I don't think we could have even handled that many cases with, with our current staff. But we also knew at that time that ADHS had hired those investigators, and we could shift some of those, that caseload over to them, and they kept asking us and making sure that we were doing such a thing. So in this graph or this chart here, the average time from date reported to county and start of investigation from September twenty-first, 2020 through June twenty-fourth, when we, this information was pulled, the average time from date reported to county and start of investigation was one day. The average time from assigning a case to a Mojave County Department of Health investigator and the investigator actually reaching the case the first time was seven days. Again, oftentimes looking for contact information, and by contact, I mean actually reaching the case. So we've called them, we've called them, we've called them, and they actually pick up the phone, and we have an opportunity to talk. Fifty-two percent of those cases opted in to the symptom checking software system. The percent lost to follow-up, at least three calls made with no response, was twenty-eight percent of those cases. And, you know, I think we, we did our best, of course, not just with the resources, but also the expertise that we had onboard, and some of the limitations with how data was collected and, and what resources were available to us in terms of that contact information. Oftentimes, people would have to, our case investigators, for example, would have to Google and try to search for somebody and to get their contact information, and that's, you can, that's time consuming. So I alluded to some challenges with Medsys. Staff reported case investigation information into Medsys, which is the state infectious disease reporting database. The system is capable of handling large caseloads and information, however, the questions were limited to what was typical in a normal outbreak. It was not tailored until later, and actually, in Medsys, it could never be tailored. That's where the Qualtrics survey came in, is they started using the Qualtrics survey instead of Medsys to do their case investigations, and then that information could, what information could, could be uploaded. So the inflexibility really prevented without, without collecting information in an entirely different database separately, you had what was in Medsys to collect. Staff were collecting worksite information after the request from the board and entered that information into a different database, as I mentioned, as there was no field in Medsys for this information. When ADHS developed the Qualtrics Case Investigation Survey that included broad questions about possible location of disease spread, so that, that was helpful. So possible locations of COVID-19 disease spread. This is important, because I think as case numbers grew, it was becoming very difficult to actually identify where someone acquired the virus, because it was so widespread out in the community. The most common source of infection is within the household, from one family member to another. But in what location did the first family member become infected? Unless the infected person was in a closed community such as a long-term care facility or correctional facility, is nearly impossible to tell. Even in closed communities, it can be difficult to determine that the, the disease may have been introduced by a visitor, staff member, a resident transferred in from another location or other source. And in many cases, as you know, long-term care facilities, assisted living facilities and so forth were not allowing visitors come in. They did have medical staff coming in to provide medical care to some of those individuals. In regular settings, the source is even more difficult to determine. If two individuals in a workplace became infected, they may have shopped at the same store, their children may have attended the same school. Because the incubation period of the disease is two weeks, most cases visited many locations during the weeks and could have been infected at any one of those locations. To further complicate the ability to identify the source of a cluster, some people who are infected with COVID-19 were never tested and may never have, not have had symptoms. So although they spread disease, they would not show up as an additional case in a given location, even though they were part of a disease spread. So that, again, was about connecting dots. And Medsys doesn't do that for you. So for example, if you, if you have a case, and that is, that case is assigned to an investigator, and then you have another case, that may be assigned to a different investigator. Unless this investigator knows the worksite, and this investigator identifies the worksite and communicates with this investigator about each case, you don't know that those people work at the same location. Sometimes a worksite would inform us that they had a number of cases, and in those cases, of course, we can easily identify those as an outbreak, but in other cases, that was very difficult to determine.
Director Burley, if I may interrupt you on the second bullet point there, where it talks about children may have attended the same school. I thought that I had seen studies where it said that children were not super-spreaders, that they weren't giving it to each other. So is there any data that is newer that's contrary to that?
Certainly. Supervisor Ling and Filter, they're not super-spreaders by any means, but they can spread it to their parents, who then interact with other parents. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they don't acquire the, the virus itself. It just means that they're not in that type of setting going to be spreading it quite as easily as others.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, certainly. So possible locations of disease spread in Mojave County. Assisted living facilities, I think, as you're aware, there were a number of facilities that were pretty hard-hit in the initial spike. Long-term care facilities, we had outbreaks in RV parks, detention facilities, schools, hospitals, outpatient facilities. When we look at workplaces, there were restaurants to just, you name it, any kind of business was impacted by it. If they worked in close proximity to each other, it interacted closely. Private social gatherings were another source. Religious centers were another source of some, but it's hard to just, it's hard to just say that these are the only places, because this is what we know, and there are, again, things that we do not know. There may have been outbreaks, again, that occurred over time that we did not know they were an outbreak per se, meaning there were multiple cases associated with a particular event or an activity or a location. Most valid scientific studies, the clusters are limited to a situation which COVID-19 was first introduced into a community, and so the individuals infected were the first and only residents with the disease. So as you can tell, as it became more prevalent in the community, it became more difficult to tell where that, where that person became infected. The two charts show that a majority of the individuals who acquired the virus were full-time employees, although there were forty-four percent that were not working, five percent minor children, and one percent that were students. Case occupations, healthcare you see as a, as a large percentage of the cases other than the other fields that I've already mentioned. And as you know, you know, they were exposed to the virus much more frequently and often than those that were in non-hospital settings. So that is not unexpected by any means. So lessons learned. There were many, of course. In the end, I think we all did not anticipate the size and scope of the pandemic. So in hindsight, I believe our emergency response team should include, in addition to public health and emergency management, which was involved from the very beginning, the communication director, community services, economic development, IT, and other departments very early on, so we have a very coordinated response. There were things that could have been done for the, you know, as you know, businesses were impacted. We could have been working more closely with all of these individuals in hindsight to have that more coordinated response. We've always operated from a mindset of minimizing our requests for general fund dollars, and we try to minimize our, our expenses, and this came to our detriment, because we waited, I would say, about three weeks too long to hire those investigators initially. I think we would have, we became overwhelmed with cases. It's hard to figure out where that trigger point is to hire. So when we came to that time, when we started seeing the increase in cases, we came to the board, but as you know, those case increases increased exponentially initially, and that put us behind from the get-go, because it's not just about hiring. You've then got to train those investigators, and then you've got to get them in contact. You've got to follow county processes and procedures. So it's not as if you just bring them on board and they start the next day. This can often take approximately two to three weeks to get them fully trained and onboard and completely understand our processes. They were going to be working within Medsys. That's not an easy system to learn. And they did need to learn that so that they could respond and get information into that system for case investigations and contact tracing. We needed more trained epidemiology staff. We have currently one full-time epidemiologist. That person works on a number of other things other than COVID, and so as case numbers increase rapidly, again, she's integrally involved in this work, and it would have been helpful to have an additional Epi onboard from the get-go. And we will be looking at that into the future of having a different, an additional Epi to support not only our day-to-day operation and business, but monitor, track, and develop reports to keep you all abreast of trends, in addition to ensuring that we keep up with all of our other responsibilities. I think we learned that it's important to assess staff skills when they're hired and their expertise, and that doesn't always relate directly to their current position or the position they're hired into, and maintain those for future reference. Do you have Spanish-speaking people on your staff? Do you have people who can interpret? Do you have people who can, who have a certain skill set that could be useful during a pandemic or any other emergency for that matter, that can step into those roles? There are a few limitations to that. Not all of our funding sources, our grant funding sources would allow for staff to participate in the response, and in those cases, those staff had to focus on those, on their grant-related work. Other funding sources were a little bit more flexible and allowed for that. Continue to establish and maintain communication and relationships with providers and those who serve high-risk populations. I think we have had, on some level, deeper relations and others more superficial relationships with those individuals and groups, but it's important for us to maintain those relationships moving forward. I think you would all agree that there should be a standard for reporting all across Arizona counties, and some of that is based on resources. There are other counties that have two Epi's, three Epi's, four Epi's. If you look at Maricopa County, they probably have ten to fifteen Epi's on staff all the time. And as you're reporting data and being asked to report more or different data, you have to figure out how to draw that out of the system, and then you have, or collect it if you want additional information, and then report it out to those that are searching for that information. But as you know, you would see newspaper articles, for example, that said, "In this county, this happened. In this jurisdiction, this happened." Well, they may have had a different system to actually collect that information and then report it than we had. So they may have been able to collect it, and we were not. So moving forward, we may look at using some of the funding that we've been given through ELC and other sources to purchase other software systems that would allow us to do more around data collection. So that would be, and, but along with that, you need to have staff trained in order to do that. Qualtrics is not an easy system to learn as well. More press releases and media stories on what our department in Mojave County were doing to address COVID-19, how staff were involved, and we're working above and beyond. I don't know if you're aware that case investigations were going on most of the day, including into the evening, especially with the nursing staff. We were delivering medications to hospitals, oftentimes Friday evenings, excuse me, and even sometimes on weekends, we would be doing those deliveries, explaining how contact invest, or case investigations and contact tracing works, and trying to get into more detail on that. I am focusing on I am focusing on trends, cases going up and down, more cases among elderly, certain populations, so that we could ensure that we're messaging out where and targeting our messages in ways that would be more meaningful. So what went well? We adapted to constantly changing conditions. That was the, our motto was change over the last year because that's all that happened was change. Nursing and epidemiology staff had infectious disease knowledge, outbreak and case investigation knowledge and had a lot of experience in this area, which I think helped us out of the, out of the gate. We were able to use additional staffing support from nutrition and health promotion and environmental health divisions of public health to support emergency staffing needs. And although the state health department and other public health organizations experienced high rates of resignations, retirements and other turnover, there were, we didn't experience that. So I'm very happy to have retained the staff that we have because they were integral to that response. We experienced challenges far above and beyond anything experienced in public health in our practice runs for emergency management, yet the team worked together and utilized learning opportunities to improve that response all along the way. We learned how to work across silos. It's not that we've never done that before, but I think you get into your world of doing your business and you kind of get focused on that and things roll along smoothly. And then this type of large-scale event occurs and you've really got to look at who else you can bring in to help you with your response. Early training provided to the Medical Reserve Corps volunteers to do contact monitoring was very, very helpful until we got the other investigators onboard. We developed relations, relationships with other organizations, schools, hospitals, city leadership, fire departments, emergency management, long-term care and assisted living facilities, just to name a few. But these are all relationships that in the future we need to retain and ensure that we keep strong because in the event of any future emergency, again, they are integral to our response. We are one piece of a public health system and all of these other players comprise the rest of that puzzle and that picture. So we have to work as a team to make it, to have an effective response and to ensure success. Communication measures were established to improve communications with local leaders and partners to ensure information, data and respond to questions. And also a big thank you to IT for helping us with our, our webpage. I know that that was a major undertake on, taking on their part to how, to pull down data out of a system and ensure that it was uploaded into the appropriate sites within the webpage. So in summary, the commitment, dedication and sacrifices made by public health staff for the past 16 months cannot be understated. They operated oftentimes seven days a week for over a year responding to new and changing conditions, angry constituents and constant stress. I know that there were many others in the community and many of you that experienced that same level of stress as well. So a big thank you to all of you for standing up and being in that role. I would like to personally thank the public health staff that had given so much of themselves, sacrificed holidays, family time to meet the needs of our residents. Staff within county departments such as risk and emergency management, public works, county manager's office, community services and IT provided invaluable resources and assistance over the course of the pandemic. Additionally, our community partners that contributed staff and resources to COVID-19 prevention and mitigation work deserve a big thank you. Local government, hospitals and healthcare providers, emergency responders, pharmacies and many more that contributed to the overall response were very important to us and our work. Any questions?
Supervisor Bishop.
Denise, I don't necessarily have any questions, but I do want to tell you how much I appreciate you and your staff. I know that during this process, you guys were totally stressed and you continued to forge forward, establish all these relationships and somehow get the job done. And I know it wasn't an easy job and I also know that the job is not over and I, I, I hope our residents listen to your presentation and then appreciate all the work that you put into this and your staff and as we go forward and see what this new variant brings to us in Mojave County and in our nation. So I don't have any questions.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, I also want to thank you and your staff for the, the hard work that you put in. I think it's telling that you didn't have the mass exodus that they had in some other places, that you guys hung in there when you were needed and stayed the course and I appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you Chairman Johnson and again Director Burley, to you and to your staff and everybody at the county that worked on this. My hat's off to you. I appreciate everything that you guys did. I know that it was an extremely stressful and troubling time and I think you pointed out in your comments where this wasn't just a public health crisis. We, in my opinion, I think we had three separate crises going on concurrently. You had the public health crisis, you had an economic crisis and you had a social, a social crisis. Yet all of, well, not all, but a, a huge, you know, percentage of the response was focused clearly on the public health crisis where a lot of the economic stuff and a lot of the social stuff kind of fell through the cracks. So I'm glad that's a lesson learned and I hope that if we ever, God forbid, are in another situation like that, we can be a lot more precise in our response. I know that you, in your hands were tied. A lot of the things that you were doing were dictates from the state level where they did just this broad brush, this is the way it's going to be at the state and, and they didn't give us a lot of local control to, to make policy choices, you know, to respond to the situation that was on the ground here in Mojave County. So hopefully that's also a lesson learned, not just at the county level, but at the state level that, you know, they need to empower us to do what we need to do in a timely manner to make sure that the public health portion of the crisis is, is handled efficiently, but also the economic and the social parts of that as well. So just in summary, I'd like to thank you and your just job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I want to echo the, the Supervisor said, parts of the latest, almost a year and a half since this whole nightmare started and we've gone through a lot as a county. We learned a lot about public health and what they've done and you and your department have acted with great humility, sometimes under very unfair and, and hurtful comments that came your way. And so I wanted you, you best know how proud I am of all of you.
Thank you Supervisor Angus.
Director Burley, maybe I'm the only one that's totally dissatisfied with the contract tracing and understand, I don't know how it can be improved because the state was doing part of it. You talked about the system not being able to have the input or the questions that should be asked. When you finally get a hold of, I think you said you got a hold of 55%. It's really hard to track anything. I think when we only have 55% of the people answering and most of them, I'm guessing, are saying they don't know where they got it from. So I'm not seeing why or how we can improve the contract tracing or if we even need to do it because all the examples that you gave are, are the ones where you saw it were things that we all knew was going to be there anyway. It did point out the really shortcomings of long-term healthcare facilities that, you know, we put loved ones there to, you know, hopefully extend their life and make it comfortable and here, here they are killing all of our people off, you know? I don't know if there, if there's any way for them to increase their safety standards there, but we have no way. I think all of us were hoping that you would come back with information during the time period saying, you know what, restaurants are causing this or we're getting a big outbreak from X, Y or Z place and, and we just don't get that information. Is that something that we need to have a better, I don't know how we're going to get the people to respond. I guess that's the biggest thing to begin with.
Right.
And do you see it as a, something that we need to continue doing? I don't see the results from, from the money that was spent.
Supervisor Johnson, Chairman Johnson, I do believe we need to continue the work. So, you know, every case that we're able to impact is one less case that we, that we can prevent in the future. So it is important that we continue that work. My plan is to actually ask if the local health officers association can schedule a half a day or sometime at least where we can all, as health officers, talk about how we can improve systems statewide and locally. What worked, what didn't work because we were all, you know, we had meetings weekly, but, you know, we were really focused on very key indicators at that time and sometimes that didn't involve contact tracing and, and case investigation. So I think we can all learn from one another what worked well and what didn't and see what improvements we can make locally to either our systems, our process, additional software purchase that would allow us to answer additional questions and, and collect that information and then have it upload into either MedSys or at least have the ability to report that back to the board in a more cohesive and, and regular format or regular consistent basis.
And I guess maybe, because that'll go ahead, like Supervisor Lingefelter talked about, we got a lot of direction from the state and we had to follow their direction. So I don't think we really know if the limiting of bars and restaurants and those things helped or didn't help because we really can't say, you know, we had an outbreak from those, those facilities. I mean, there's no way to pinpoint any one place that, that caused it and we can say, oh, group settings, but, I mean, it's kind of hard, like, you know, we put a lot of, you know, economic burden on people and we can't really show that that was a good idea. I mean, it seems like it probably was a good idea, but I mean, we have no numbers to do it.
Right, right. You know, in, in terms of data, I would have to agree with you Supervisor Johnson, Chairman Johnson. I also would refer you to that, that risk index that ADHS created, I believe it was ADHS, I can't actually say that for certain, but that risk index, we talked about the high-risk areas and let me grab that out real quick, I have that. But those individuals that worked within those settings, of course, would have been at higher risk because of the environment that they were working in. And I think those are really where we should target our, our messaging and information because those haven't changed unless those individuals are wearing masks within their work environment. They're still lacking that protection within that site and so are the patrons of that. So.
Maybe that's something that if you could come back to the board with recommendations that you think the state should take, we as a board can talk to our, you know, legislatures and maybe see about getting, because I really think there should be more personally emphasis on the long-term care facilities, you know? And I understand that's just money, but, you know, they, they don't do that for free so they should have some good safety standards in place to protect the people. As we go through, you were talking about our numbers going up, you know, and percentage-wise, would it be reasonable now for us to say subtract the 67,000 because, that have gotten the shots? What percentage of those are, if you know, are being infected now once they've got the shots? 1%? 2%?
So I, let me think, let me, let me ask and see if Lynn might have that answered. Don't know? Okay, all right. We'll get that information for you Supervisor Johnson.
Well, I was just thinking if it was a small number, then wouldn't we say, okay, if there's 67,000 people that have gotten both shots, we take those out, so we got 133,000. If we're getting, you know, the percentage would change because now it'd be a higher percentage of people getting infected because once the people are, you know, hopefully gotten the shots, they're not going to get infected. So it would show a better percentage of the people and maybe change some people's minds on getting the shots or at least being more careful with it out there. Did you have something Supervisor Gould? No?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, if they had that 9% breakthrough, which was the people that had been vaccinated and, but still got sick, so you could probably use that as a, just a rough estimate for the number that you were looking at.
And Supervisor Gould, that was just specifically for the Delta variant.
Oh, okay, okay.
So just to be clear, for the other vaccines, the efficacy rate was slightly higher, but as the variants come out, sometimes these vaccines are not quite as effective against the, the variant.
And their effectiveness is that you don't go to the hospital, not that you do not contract the disease.
That's correct, right.
Which is, most people don't seem to understand.
Exactly. Thank you Supervisor Gould. The primary purpose of the vaccines is to prevent severe illness, hospitalization and death as a result of the virus.
And then with, you hit on a good point. I think you've said in the past that hospitalizations were the number one bankruptcy cause and so that's something that people have to understand that now there's not the support from the government that was out there before to cover those expenses. And what is the average hospital stay now, do you know or?
I don't, no.
An idea that it's, it's over a week probably?
Yeah, and it depends on the level of care as well, that if it's an ICU visit or within their regular population and the type of care needed, so.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Chairman Johnson, thank you. If we do get an opportunity at the county to impart to the state, your, your colleagues at the state, maybe some lessons learned, you know, I think one of the things that they really need to look at and reexamine is the whole essential versus non-essential designation. I think that that policy in and of itself created a huge transfer of wealth last year. Also the, the situation with the restaurants and how the liquor licenses were being held hostage, if you didn't have the right type of liquor license, you almost had to shut your place down. And there was, there was a situation last year for, for months that in Kingman, Chili's was the only operation that had the right liquor license and they were the only ones in town. Everybody else had to shut down. Stuff like that they need to look at. Thanks.
And then maybe, I guess another thing I have that was obviously a thorn in my side and I understand the HIPAA laws, but I think we were asking the public to trust us and we're still doing, we were very defensive on giving out ages and, and deaths and those sorts of things. I don't know if that's an attorney question that they can look at, but I think it leads more to, and I know you say, well, we don't want to say that this person was six years old when they died because somebody's going to know who it is and, you know, I disagree on that because I wouldn't know, but there, it could be somebody that knows. I just think maybe the more information we get out, that makes it more personal where people understand the same thing if we say, you know, I realize the business wouldn't like it, but we say, hey, you know, like the, everybody in that place came down with it, so at least people know that it, that it does. I think it just, the more honest we are with people, I think the more they will take advantage of what we have. Is there anybody else? All right, thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what you just said about the information. I think for a long time, that was a big problem because the headlines really wasn't the, the real stories were, didn't match up and it took a while for people to realize. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong Denise, I think you showed it, that the average age of death was pretty much the same throughout the whole pandemic and still is, right? The average death and what else?
Supervisor Angus, that is correct. The average number, the average age of death has not varied significantly over time.
Right, so all the headlines, there was data, but the average age of death is still, it's been consistent the whole time. I think that's a very important piece of information to, to get out. Again, that's a headline, the age of death, you know, I had someone who, who just passed away from it a couple of weeks ago. It was a factor in the death, which is what most of this is, is a factor, not, when you, when you pass away from COVID, you're not from COVID, it's a, it's a, what's the word I'm looking for? It's part of it. Can you hear me?
I, I can, yes Supervisor Angus.
You can't hear me?
I, I can hear you, yes.
Oh, you can, all of a sudden you just went, went left. So yeah, I, I can't say enough how much more that we need to get information. enough how much more that we need to get into making so people can make the best choices for themselves. And today, I was reading in the Israeli newspaper, I have to put in speaker for a second, but I just thought this was very interesting. So, today, infections in Israel spiked by 50%. Forty-two percent of Israelis who caught COVID on Monday were vaccinated, very concerned over the efficacy of the vaccine against the contagious Delta variant. So, their ministry of health reported 501 new coronavirus cases on Monday, which is a 50% increase from the previous day. But, out of the new infections on Monday, 42% had been vaccinated against the virus. So, again, we talk about the nation, and as the variants come, you know, and I think that's why a lot of people waited, you know, to see if they're going to have these variants. And who knows, if you've been vaccinated, what would happen if there's another vaccine, right? Isn't that why we have two vaccinations every year? Because they change it for the different variants, etc.?
So, they typically do that with flu, is they'll look at what was most common strain of flu within the southern hemisphere, and then bring that forward to the northern hemisphere for the flu season. So, they do try to anticipate.
Right, right. What will happen with vaccines for this thing going forward?
I do think at this point Supervisor Angus, there's still a lot of research about the longevity of the vaccine, the current vaccine, and its effectiveness against the different variants. And that may vary over time. So,
Hello?
We're still in that research place.
Oh, all right. I was completely cut off. But, that's okay. I'll watch it. But, again, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Angus.
All right, thank you very much. I will thank you Director Burley, and we'll take
Meeting back to order. Add of number 50, discussion possible action except the Colvins' offer to purchase parcel 225-58-463 young for the sum of $1,290.27. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can get Luke to come up and explain what we're doing here, it'd be great. I'm at least expecting it to be great.
He sat here all day. We could continue it.
Thank you Chairman Johnson.
Thank you Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Gould. So, this is a parcel that the Treasurer's Office foreclosed on, on behalf of the state. It went to the tax deed auction. During the auction, we became aware that it was actually a sliver parcel. It's located down in Los Lagos, down in, I believe that's Fort Mojave. It's a sliver of property that is in the backyard of a property owner's home, basically. It's fenced in on both sides, and it backs up to the water there in that community. And so, there's really no other use for it other than as part of that person's backyard. But, at the time that the developer completed that development, they did not combine it with the property owner's home. And the title company that brokered the transaction did not notice it at the time. So, we pulled it back from the auction. Statute allows us to do that if there's certain issues. We spoke with the property owners. They've been working with their title company, the predecessor. The title company that actually brokered the transaction was purchased by a different title company years later. So, the subsequent title company has been working with the owner to find a resolution. So, if this item is approved today, that title company will cut a check to the property owner, who will then send us a check to buy the property. And we would issue a deed to them to convey the ownership.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 50 be adopted.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same say. Motion carries. Item 51, Supervisor Lingenfelter.
Thank you Chairman Johnson. I put this on the agenda today. Then I found out that Coral was not going to be here. So, I just want to say on the record that I appreciate Coral and the additional analysis that she's presented to us. Since I've been in, I've been trying to read everything that I can in the past, to try to bring myself up to speed on the PSPRS liability and what the county's plan is for that. With the failure of the staff's proposed sales tax, I put this back on. I just wanted to ask for a couple of things, if you could ask or send to the board. What have Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, and Kingman opted to do with their PSPRS unfunded liability? I'd appreciate that. And then also, I asked, again, which is attached, a couple of additional scenarios. Some of them, you know, look at refinancing, which can be a viable option in certain instances. But ultimately, I think, but I hope that the county is just able to reduce the total cost to our Mojave County taxpayers. I think that's probably everything. We all agree on that. And I just look forward to more discussion with staff on this. So, thank you.
So, you're not looking for any decision today?
No, I'm not. The intent of this item was to provide this additional analysis, to ask Manager Elters to provide what the three incorporated cities are doing. And then hopefully, it's a part of our ongoing fiscal year '21-'22 budget decision. But ultimately, I would hope that whatever we decide on would maximize our savings to our taxpayers.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lingenfelter will be happy to bring that information back, either directly at the next board meeting or the one after, for sure.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor Angus.
When you're putting more information to bring back, plus, along with what the cities are doing, can you also look at what some of the fire districts are doing? Because I know that they have been, and they are redoing their loans. They're being very proactive. And I'd like to know if that's something we can do, or if we're under different laws. So, all that kind of information as well.
No problem. Anything else? Hearing none, we are adjourned.